Calling to order the Monday, December 18th, 2023, meeting of the 40th Council of the City of Berkeley. Ms. Mitchell, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Baker?
Here.
Councilmember Black?
Here.
Mayor Protem Gavin?
Here.
Councilmember Hunnens?
Here.
Councilmember Patterson?
Here.
Councilmember Valani?
Here.
Mayor Dean?
Here. Our first order of business is the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Support.
By Mayor Protem Gavin with support from Councilmember Baker. Any changes or corrections? Seeing none, Ms. Mitchell, will you please call the roll?
Black?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Hunnens?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Valani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes. Please stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We've now come to the meeting, portion of the meeting where you may present your thoughts on issues that are not included on tonight's agenda. Councilmembers will not engage you in discussion. Please direct your comments to the chair. Please refrain from cheering, booing, clapping, or speaking out of turn. If your concern needs to be addressed by a department or a member of city staff, please leave your contact information on the table located right outside this door. You may speak on a specific agenda item when it is being considered. When you come to the microphone, please state your name, city of residence, and you have three minutes to tell us what's on your mind and in your heart. Ms. Mitchell, have you received any correspondence to add to the public comments?
No, Madam Mayor, if not.
All right, I am closing public comments. Ms. Mitchell, please read the items on tonight's consent agenda.
One, approval of the minutes, matter of approving the minutes of the 40th regular city council meeting on Monday, December 4th, 2023, and the joint city council meeting on Thursday, November 30th, 2023. Two, warrant, matter of approving warrant number 1393. Three, ordinance number 01623, matter of considering the second reading and adoption of an ordinance of the city council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan, to amend section 126-7, installation in section 126-74, supervision of connection in chapter 126, utilities of the City of Berkeley Code of Ordinances, to update the policies and inspection procedures for sewer connections.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilmember Hunnens?
Support.
With support from Councilmember Baker. Any corrections or additions? Seeing none, Ms. Mitchell, please call the roll.
Gavin?
Yes.
Hunnens?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Valani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Black?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes. The consent agenda has passed. Ms. Mitchell, please read item number one on tonight's regular agenda.
Recognitions, presentations, matter of any recognitions or presentations from the consent agenda.
Seeing none, please read number two on tonight's agenda.
Presentation, matter of receiving a presentation by Reina Emmons of PSLZ LLC of the annual audit and resulting annual consolidated financial report CAFR, and requesting the city council to receive and file the CAFR.
Mr. Baumgarten?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So we've completed our annual fiscal analysis through the audits process. Our auditor is actually in the conference room presenting to Plymouth right now and will be with us in just a moment. Alex, can you go let Reina know we're ready?
Absolutely.
So I was going to start us off this evening by noting a couple of things that are, I think, of good importance to point out. We work closely with our auditors, but the important part of this in the state law is that we get an independent audit. So as I mentioned earlier to several council members, what we're doing this evening is receiving a presentation, learning the information along with the community, but the council is not in charge of providing oversight over the results of this document. It is produced by an independent auditing agent that is hired by the city and ultimately transmits these findings and the report document to the State of Michigan Department of Treasury. And so that does not change what happens here this evening, but just want to let council know, as well as those at home, what next steps are. It's really important that we have an independent auditor so they can come in and look with a fresh set of eyes at all the ways that the city manages its funds and then ultimately delivers an opinion. This year, we do have a high-quality opinion. It is unqualified, as they used to say, which means it does not have any qualifiers. It's not a statement on the auditors themselves. They are quite qualified. This year was very different for us, as you know, as we've recapped throughout the year. We did make some changes to our finance department about a year ago, and so we have had our own Lori, interim finance director Lori Fielder, who was our accountant for the department already, take the reins as our interim director. We also had contractual support from Plant Moran and Carl Johnson throughout the year. So this many sets of eyes that allowed us to view the policies, procedures, the processes, basically top to bottom how our finance department operates. These new set of eyes helped point us in different and updated directions, which we're very grateful for, and which will continue to bear fruit in years moving forward. I want to make note of the, it's a sizable document for sure because it's so thorough, but I do want to point anyone who's interested, and a good place to start in this document is called the Management Discussion and Analysis, which goes through highlights and summaries of the findings, and then also talks about some of the things that we believe will impact subsequent fiscal years. Both of those can be found in pages three to nine in the document. Of notes, even within that document too, is the city's unassigned fund balance. We previously reported it to be very low, in fact, below the minimum allowed. In the course of having multiple sets of eyes look at these, what we found out was that we had a larger-than-needed sum of money that was actually sitting in the assigned fund balance category. Specifically, it was to cover the OPEV expenses or other post-employment benefit expenses, which had actually been paid out through the general fund throughout the year, so that liability did not need to be considered to be assigned anymore, so it fell to the unassigned category. Ultimately, the city ended up with roughly 27% fund balance specifically for the unassigned. And that category is those items that aren't already allocated to some other future purpose. And so this is, well, in our home budget, we would probably refer to as a rainy day fund, if you will. But it's helped us to be prepared for unforeseen challenges. And so that is much higher than we had originally anticipated, which ended up being one of those pleasant surprises you don't often find when you associate with the word audit. In addition to that, we did note in our audit report as well, the significant paydowns and progress that we are making in paying down our other post-employment benefits in general. We had started in 2017, moving from a pay-as-you-go system to a pre-funded system, and we have seen that total net liability drop substantially. Not only have we served a fund where we are prepaying a lot of these issues, not just covering our year-to-year, but also building a fund for future liabilities as well, but since that is a benefit that fell off in 2008, contractually, we worked with our unions as well as our merit employees, and we no longer offer post-employment benefits like health insurance. So between no longer incurring new liabilities and incurring assets, we are starting to squeeze that down, and that has dropped from about $26 million or so down to about $7 million. So we continue to make good progress on it. It is still a liability that exists. It's not one of those liabilities that are all due today. Think about like your mortgage, where you may be able to view that top number, but it's paid down over the course of time. So by the time we get down to zero, we will have done so with a combination of shrinking the liability as well as growing funds to allocate to those resources. Those are the two things that we are probably most proud of on this, but overall, the city's financial position continues to be in need of some combination of cuts and additional revenues. And that is a clear thread throughout this document. Most of the cuts that we had to make, you'll see reflected in next year's audit because they were the subject of this current fiscal year. But ultimately, we finished with a manageable fund balance. Certainly, it's on the low end of our target, but we're grateful to be within the target range, and we are well-positioned with the data in this document to continue to make needed cuts, implement cuts this year, and then make additional cuts through our budget process for July 1 of '24, which will start in January. That's my prepared notes on this, and while we're waiting on Reina to finish up with anything else, were there questions from council that you could entertain? She did bring a presentation.
Well, my first question, where is Ms. Emmons?
She is in our conference room, zooming to the Plymouth City Council right now, is my understanding.
Wrapping up.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from council, discussion councilmember Hunnens? Was that our?
That's a sign of frustration and impatience. That's not a signal. And that I should keep my lips shut.
Probably reflecting on a point of your frustration is we would have liked to have delivered this presentation to council earlier in the month, but we did not have the materials put together in time. We did all that we could to work with the auditors to make sure that they get every single thing that they need, but we have seen some delays here that have been a point of frustration for us, council, and I'm sure the auditor himself as well. While I do have a few minutes, the person that's probably borne the most of those frustrations is Ms. Fielder, who joins us this evening. She has done a fantastic job of leading our department throughout this year. She's been right with us, making changes. She's helped us examine policies and procedures, advocating for changes that she has seen for a while, and cannot say enough good things about Lori and the work that she puts in to making sure that this document comes before you. It is no small lift, and when you're a woman of one, as she has been from a full-time standpoint in that department, it is yeoman's work, and it takes a toll on everyone involved, but no one as much as Lori. So kudos to Ms. Fielder.
Thank you, ma'am.
I agree with everything that Matt said. Lori, you have been conscientious, professional, diligent. You care not only about your work, but about this community, and I'm greatly appreciative of all of that. Councilmember Baker?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was going to actually offer the exact same appreciation and gratitude for your hard work and continued diligent focus here for so many years, and hopefully for more to And with that, I'm glad to see that we have our representative here, so I'll yield the floor.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, and thank you for allowing me to accommodate another city this evening. It is the season. My name is Reina Emmons. I'm a partner with PSLZ. My pleasure to be here this evening. The...
Thank you.
The city did receive the highest level of audit opinion possible, which is an unmodified opinion, so no exceptions, disclaimers, nothing bad to report to you this evening. So with that, I'd like to start with a few highlights. If I get this right. Do we have it upside down? Starting off with the city operating millage rates. Based on the Headley Amendment, as you know, this is nothing unfamiliar to the city council, your operating millage has been rolled back. You did have a taxable value increase of 5.96%, but you are down to 7.93 mils from the original 9.3 mils, going back to 2014 as the first year on this chart. So that's a 1.38 mil drop over a period of years, and that is, seems to be, that is impacting the, your revenues and expenditures, as you'll see in a minute, haven't come down, even though your best efforts of trying to reduce expenditures, everything's going up here. So general fund revenues, the... Our property taxes are up. I'm sorry. There we go. State shared revenue up 1.4% over the prior year. As we said, the property taxes are up with taxable value increase. Significantly, your public safety millage rates, which are the operating plus the pension, is just under, I'm sorry, just under $3 million that you've collected, but the expenditures are about $6 million. So again, I know you're aware of this, but I did want to point this out because that is significant. Also, in other revenue is the American Rescue Plan Act funds. So that's a, you had $615,000 this year. Excuse me just a minute, I just want to catch my breath. You spent $615,000 this year. That means you have $1 million left, which I know you have plans for in 2024. Okay, clearly. I'm going to move on to the general fund fund balance. That really tells the story here. The unrestricted fund balance this year is 23.5% of general fund expenditures. I know you like to keep an eye on that. The city did establish a fund balance policy. You like to stay in that 25% to 35% range. Over a three-year average, that three-year average, it puts you right now at about 27%. So that's about where, you'd like to be there or better, I know. I apologize. The city has also made a concerted effort to pay down your other post-employment benefit liability. You've done that over the last six or seven years. You went from $21.6 million in 2017 as a liability, and you're down to 7.1 million. That doesn't happen by accident. Again, concerted effort by the city council. You've budgeted for that. You went from 17.7% funded to 50% funded in the current year, and that's all by making extra lump-sum contributions from year to year. The MERS Pension Plan, this year reflects a net investment loss of 1.4 million in the current year. Last year, you had a 1.55 million gain, so a huge swing there. The MERS Pension Plan is valued as of December 31st each year. So December 31st, 2022, was not a great day in the stock market, and therefore showing the $1.4 million loss. However, the city has made that up. The stock market did rebound January to June of 2023. Hopefully, we're going to end the year this year on a good note in the stock market because that really does impact your numbers. Conversely, the public safety pension is measured as of June 30th, 2023. So if you're looking in the notes and you're comparing why did one have a net investment loss and one had a net investment gain, part of that is the measurement date. So that is, the public safety pension's measured as of June 30th each year, 2023. You're showing a net investment gain there of 2.05 million. Last year, the public safety pension had actually a net investment loss of 3.45 million. The public safety pension ended with funding. You were funded at a 70.7%, up from 68.6% last year. With that, I know that this council seems to have a lot of questions. I'm happy to address anything you'd like this evening.
Does that conclude your presentation, Ms. Emmons?
Yes.
Okay. Any public comment on this agenda item? Mr. Hunter? Ms. Emmons, if you would just take a seat?
Of course.
And then we'll call you back up if council has any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Joshua Hunter, Berkeley. I had a chance to review this. I'm sure, I know you, council didn't have much time to review it either, but I did look at the balance sheet, and I just had some questions regarding the general fund and the water and sewer position statement, net position statement. For the general fund, there's an asset category for due from other funds for $1,720,000. I know $120,000 of that is related to a loan to the sidewalk fund, so that leaves $1,600,000. And I didn't see any notes for this 1.6 million, but I see that in the net position statement for the water and sewer system, under the liabilities section, there's a due to other funds, 1.6 million. So I'd like to understand, what's the nature of this 1.6 million, and why does the water and sewer fund owe this? Why is this amount due to the general fund? I don't recall any amendments authorizing this, but I'd just like to learn what the nature of that is. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Okay. Discussion from council. Since this was a presentation, there will be no action taken from council. It doesn't require a vote. We've received a presentation. Ms. Mitchell, will you please read item number three on tonight's agenda?
Motion number M8323, matter of awarding the contract for the roof replacement at the community center to MTD Construction, 126 Summit Street, Brighton, Michigan, at the cost of $94,000. In addition, please allocate $10,000 for construction contingencies. Funds for this project are coming from the fiscal year 2024 special grant awarded by the state of Michigan.
Is there a motion to approve M8323?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilmember Patterson with support from Councilmember Valani. Mr. Baumgarten?
Just a quick procedural item. Mayor, as you know, we had advocated with our state representatives and our state senators for some grant dollars for making investments in our community. One of the things that they had awarded to us was $380,000 total for recreation facility grants, and this is one of the ways that we intend to utilize those funds. We've been working with the states to make sure they're well-aware of how we plan to put these in action, but Mr. Brown has been leading this project, has been communicating with State Senator McMarlowe's office.
Thank you. Mr. Brown?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. As Mr. Baumgarten said, this is part of the $380,000 grant that was awarded to us for improvements at the community center. I took this out to bid. I received three qualified bids from three contractors. MTD Construction was our low bid. They will be, if awarded tonight, they will be ready to start this project in springtime. We were going to try to maybe squeeze it in the winter here, but I think it's better to wait till the weather's better, spring. And it kind of sums everything up. It's pretty cut and dry. They're going to put a brand-new roof on there with a new tapered insulation system that'll help with drainage and hopefully last us 20, 25 years plus.
Great.
So.
Thank you.
A long overdue project, yes.
Okay, any public comment on this agenda item? Seeing none, discussion from council? Councilmember Baker?
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you for your diligence in preparing this and bringing it to us tonight. What's the average duration of this? So it starts in springtime. Does it take a month, a week, two months, a day? Can you give us a little bit of what a day in life might be like?
Yeah, absolutely. Once they mobilize their crew, it'll be about a one-week process to remove the current roof and insulation and install the membrane and insulation. They will then measure for all their metal, their sheet metal work, and then they'll come back about a week or 10 days later, and that'll take about another week. But everything will be water-dry at the end of the day. They'll only remove as much roof as they can replace in a day period, so there won't be any leaks or any issues during construction. So it's about a week, with about a week in between and then another week or so. So maybe a month process at the long end, I would say, yeah.
Yeah, cool. As far as, so thank you for that. And in terms of patron safety, folks coming in and out of the facility during the process, what kind of arrangements are made? Is there like a big canopy thing over the front door? How can we ensure like no stray nails or shingles or anything fall on our heads?
Absolutely. They'll take all the precautions with cones and maybe caution tape to keep people at a safe distance. We'll have discussions with the Parks Department as we get closer about possibly delaying programming or postponing programming while this project takes place for the safety of people coming in and out and the safety of the people in the building. Expect some debris, dust, kind of things, as they're tearing out an old roof. That's just kind of comes with the territory, unfortunately, but when we get closer, I'll coordinate with them and take all the proper precautions.
Nice, thank you. I'm glad to hear this is in such goodwill hands here, so.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Councilmember Patterson?
Sorry, I have one question. You said it'll start in the spring. Is there any plans? Like I was in there last week, and there's buckets, like it's currently leaking. Is there any plans for those repairs? Or I'm just thinking of the freeze law.
Do we have kind of in place with these guys that they're going to kind of be our go-to contractor to do the repairs? They have done a couple repairs already. They were able to find a spot that a previous contractor wasn't able to find and stop some of the major areas. We're kind of just, unfortunately, it's going to kind of be that way. We're going to do the best we can to keep it dry until we can get the new roof on. We're hoping maybe if things actually freeze like winter time should, it should slow that leaking down a little bit, but you know, 50 degrees yesterday and tomorrow, so it's kind of hit or miss. But we'll have them kind of on standby to come out and make any kind of repairs needed to keep the building functioning as good as we can.
Perfect, thank you.
Yep.
Ms. Mitchell, please call the roll on M8323.
Hunnens?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Valani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Black?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes. Motion number M8323 has passed. Ms. Mitchell, please read item number four on tonight's agenda.
Public hearing, matter of holding a public hearing regarding the Community Development Block Grant Program Year 2024, application in the approximate amount of $35,012.
Mr. Baumgarten?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Before we open the public hearing, just a quick overview on how we intend to utilize these annual funds. For those that are new to the acronym CDBG, it does stand for Community Development Block Grant, which is a federal program that is administered for us and several other communities through Oakland County. We sort of pool our potential resources and then make a strong replication to the federal government, because we are all considered to be non-entitlement communities, which means we don't receive a direct allocation from the federal government due to population restrictions, as well as not having a low or moderate-income district, if you will. So we plan to use these in different ways, and as we have done in years past. We have a couple of familiar projects on here. First and foremost, we want to utilize $3,500 for yard services. That's our annual removal of snow and ice for our seniors that qualify for the program. We have their public services, which is our annual contribution to Haven, for $3,503. We also have our disabled services, $3,500 as well, that annually funds large print books for the library. And our public services, our largest public service project, under the category of removal of architectural barriers, which is, that's a category set by the federal government, will be banking to continue our updates to all of our city parks and installing ADA-compliance walkways in those parks. If you're mayor familiar with the work that we've done in some of our other parks, most recently in the Kiwanis-Totlott Park, we were able to put wide, flat sidewalks that help accommodate anybody who may, you know, be unable to access our parks and its amenities due to changes in grades, potential strip hazards, slip hazards, all of those that we currently have over at Community Park now. If you're familiar with the asphalt walkway that is starting to come apart and has been subject to roots and just wear and tear over time. So what we would do is, we would look, see if that project can be accommodated by the $24,500 that we are allocating to it. If not, then we'll bank this money, add it to next year's allocation, and be able to replace all those sidewalks at once in the park, which is, again, helps us help others access those amenities and all the brand-new equipment that has gone in the last couple of years. So good projects all the way around. Most importantly, they are compliant with the rules of CDBG, and it gives us a way to bring those dollars in-house, saving us on the need to fund those capital projects ourselves, but also help us do some good in the community through home chore projects, through allocation to Haven, and then through accommodating those that need larger print books.
Thank you.
That is our intention on that.
Okay, thank you. I'm officially opening the public hearing at 7:29. Anyone care to comment on this? I'm closing the public hearing at 7:29 and 18 seconds. Ms. Mitchell, please read item number five on tonight's agenda.
Resolution number R2623, matter of adopting a resolution for the Community Development Block Grant CDBG Program Year 2024, application in the approximate amount of $35,012, and requesting the mayor and city manager to... and requesting the mayor and city manager to sign the application and submit it to the Oakland County CDBG Division.
Is there a motion to approve R twenty-six twenty-three?
So moved, Your Honor.
Support.
Motion made by Councilmember Baker with support from Mayor Pro Tem Gavin. Mr. Baumgarten.
Really, I would say the motion is so complete, there's no other, uh, requirements needed. This is just a procedural item that needs to happen for us to make our application.
Okay. Any public comments? Discussion from council? Yes, Council, Mayor Pro Tem Gavin.
Thank, thank you, Your Honor. No, that's all right. Uh, Matt, can you talk a little bit about what, uh, what requirements we would have to meet if we decided to bank the money for a year?
Uh, we just, essentially, we would have to, uh, work with Oakland County's Home Improvement Program, uh, let them know what our intentions are. And then next year, there'll be some subsequent, uh, reallocation of previous year's funds into, uh, this year's, uh, when we apply for the actual, uh, when we apply to actually receive those funds in hand to pay out a contractor after we've initiated that project.
Okay.
So they take, they keep very close, uh, view on how and when we spend those dollars because, uh, that same oversight is provided to them from the federal government.
Yeah, so they're the ones that would then be still in contact with the federal government about planning.
Correct, yes. We do not have any direct contact with, uh, with, uh, the House and, uh, um,
HUD.
HUD, yeah. Um, which is ultimately who administers the grant.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Baker?
Thank you, Your Honor, and, and thank you again for, for bringing this before us, uh, again this year. Um, I think it's an incredibly important use of funds that are available. I have a follow-up question to the, the notion of like, um, reserving some funding for future projects. Is there a limit on the number of years that we can roll something over? And if so, have we ever come close to that?
Yes, we have not come close to that. Um, we, when we were, in the past, we've been more limited. Uh, we have done the tactile paver inserts for our streets. Uh, they would allow you to bank up to three years. Um, but you have a funding ratio that has to be maintained by a certain aspect.
Right.
And they, um, they get nervous because the, the federal government does not like us going really two, three years. They would ideally have us do two years at a time 'cause that, that funding ratio, um, is kind of, on the whole, is reviewed by Congress, uh, who then would, you know, might maybe second guess allocating as much to this program nationwide. So for that reason, all the, um, subcomponent, some, subcomponents and local jurisdictions all have to do their part to make sure those dollars go into the services that they promised.
Excellent. Thank you. And if you, if you wouldn't mind, please share a few, a few, uh, words about, um, the notion of Haven. Uh, I don't want that to, I don't want us to drive by that. That's, uh, to me, that's, well, all these are important projects that benefit, uh, various members of our community, and, and Haven, I think, really strikes close to the heart.
Sure.
Can you share a little bit more about that?
So, uh, Haven, it does incredible, uh, work for victims of domestic violence. Um, they have, uh, housing options that helps, uh, get somebody, helps somebody leave a, uh, a dangerous situation at, at home or with a, with a relationship or interpersonal relationship, a romantic relationship. Whatever it is, um, they try to put that distance between individuals and their abusers. And it's, as we say, I think we said it every year, it's something that we wish we didn't need. Uh, but that need exists, and therefore it needs to be funded, uh, as much as possible. And so our allocation is, they're always grateful for it. Uh, but they themselves are a nonprofit, always looking for additional funds as well.
Excellent. Well, thank you. I, I, I join you in the, in the choir of, uh, lamenting the fact that, uh, that this is such an important portion of our, of our, um, CDBG allocation here. And, uh, I would love to, to, for this or future council, or for future councils to, to never have to need to, uh, to fund that organization because they've completed their mission. But, uh, there's, there's a lot more to it than that. But I'm really pleased that we continue our, our strong track record. Thank you.
And I'd just like to build on what, um, City Manager Baumgarten laid out for you. Haven also provides no-cost medical exams. It's a separate space at, on the Ballmont campus. People can go there. Um, it's free. There's no EOB that's gonna arrive at home. So it's safe. They also have X-ray equipment that, um, sometimes strangulation doesn't show up right away, so they can use that equipment and see any deep tissue, um, damage. They just, they do so many things. They provide advocates, court advocates. So if a man or woman has, um, been abused, there's somebody that will walk with them through that court process, which can be daunting. So lots of support, counseling, a safe place to be. They really do it all, and I'm grateful that they're there and happy that we allocate some of these dollars to, to Haven.
Yeah, they live up to their name, don't they?
They do. They do.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else? Ms. Mitchell, please call the roll on R twenty-six twenty-three.
Patterson?
Yes.
Valani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Black?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes. The, uh, resolution has passed. Ms. Mitchell, please read item number six on tonight's regular agenda.
Resolution number R twenty-seven twenty-three, matter of adopting a resolution of the City Council of the City of Berkeley establishing residential and commercial service fees for the collection and disposal of solid waste effective January first, two thousand twenty-four.
Is there a motion to approve R twenty-seven twenty-three?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilmember Henan?
Support.
With support from Councilmember Black. Mr. Baumgarten.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, this comes back before council. Uh, you'd actually seen and approved a similar, uh, resolution back in May of this year in advance of the start of this fiscal year on July one, two thousand twenty-three. Uh, what we got into is, as we, uh, implemented this, uh, these fees, they were new to many, many, uh, of our business owners and our, uh, commercial property owners. Uh, the city had been supplementing these, uh, down to almost zero for many years. Uh, we had paid, we had not, we had not moved those fees to our commercial property owners, uh, you know, as, um, just kind of in the kindness of our hearts kinda thing, uh, as a way of, uh, supporting our business community. But we have been charged for those pickups, uh, contractually for, for a very long time, decades. Uh, we actually were trying to find the beginning of it, and it does seem to, uh, be consistent with the starting documents going back to all the way to SACRA. So, uh, because we don't directly over, have oversight over that trash, uh, pickup contract, we can't make alterations now just to say like, hey, we're not charging, so therefore don't, uh, don't pass that on to us. Uh, that contract is actually held by SACRA themselves, that they, uh, the contract is between SACRA and Tringali directly, and us as a member community are charged based on the potential of all the pickups. In our case, that's about sixty-eight hundred pickups, uh, across the community. That's about sixty-four hundred for residential and about four hundred or so for commercial. And, um, again, we've been supplementing that dollar amount for, for quite a while. As of this year, uh, because of revenue constrictions that we had, we decided that it was no longer appropriate to try to supplement that for our commercial property owners. And we implemented a two-tier, um, uh, fee schedule. Uh, the smallest was forty-one dollars and five cents. That covered the cost of a hand stop, which is, uh, a non-dumpster stop. Think about kind of a commercial style where you've got a trash can or a trash bag, uh, all the way up to a two-yard dumpster that, uh, was picked up once a week. And then we had an upper tier where it was a two-yard dumpster picked up twice a week. Uh, and that was eighty-two dollars and ten cents. As we started to have discussions with our property owners, they said, the majority of them were not using dumpsters. They were not, um, utilizing the full potential of the first tier. So in consulting with, uh, council and the mayor, uh, our staff went back and took a look at the contract to see if we could find some, uh, with the minimum amount we could charge our businesses and still cover the costs that we have been paying for, for quite a while, uh, we helped, we were able to develop a hand-stop-only tier for these services at twenty dollars and sixty cents. Um, that would be individuals who were just putting trash to the curb. Again, whether it's a can or whether it's just a bag itself. Uh, but they do not themselves need a two-yard dumpster in order to handle the, the load of solid waste that they are incurring. So, um, that, that's what this, um, updated resolution introduces, is that, that lowest tier of twenty dollars and sixty cents is a monthly charge, uh, but still getting a weekly pickup. So it's essentially, twenty dollars covers four pickups a week, uh, four, four pickups a month. Uh, it would be billed quarterly as, along with our water bill. So a lot of different intervals there. Um, but what it base, as I said, though, it does cover the once-weekly hand-stop pickups. And individuals, right now, most of our commercial properties are set at that forty-one dollars and five cents. We have letters that are, uh, prepared to go out, alerting an individual to that, asking them if that's the right tier for their trash and solid waste needs. Uh, and if so, or if so, then they don't have to do any more further action. Uh, but if they need to go up to a two-yard dumpster emptied twice a week, then we can move them up to that tier. Or if they feel like they can be accommodated through a hand-stop only once a week, uh, we could move them to that twenty-dollar and sixty-cent tier. So work to be done still, um, but it would be, I think it'd be a welcome change for those that felt like a two-yard dumpster was far more than they would ever use and in some cases, far more than they would ever be able to physically accommodate on their parcel. I wanna draw council's attention to section seven of the resolution, please. Uh, we had some holdover language that, uh, made it through the editing process. Uh, it does say that this fee, the service fee shall take effect July one, two thousand twenty-three and move through June thirtieth of two thousand twenty-three. That's not the case. Uh, in this situation, it would be effective, uh, first of the year, January one, and, uh, end on June thirtieth of two thousand twenty-four. So it would be, uh, the second half of the current fiscal year. And then, as we all do during the budget process, we would reevaluate that fee and make sure that it still covers the cost that the cities, the city is incurring currently. So, uh, again, I think this will be welcome news. We've had several conversations with business owners, um, those that definitely felt like they do not need a two-yard dumpster. And when we talked to them about what the city has been paying on their behalf for the amount of time that they've been paying it and what that new fee, uh, would potentially be, um, it's been welcomed and they, uh, most of our business owners that we talked to felt it was appropriate for them to be paying, you know, that essentially was a ready-to-serv fee. We, I will note, though, it's not universal, nothing is. Those, uh, restaurant owners or those that are high users, uh, would still have to, i- if they need more than what's, uh, a two-year dumpster emptied twice a week would accommodate, if they have larger trash needs, they would, uh, still need to contract privately with an, um, with a outside company. Uh, no change to that aspect of this process. Uh, they've always had to do that, and they will continue to, to status quo there.
Okay. Thank you. Any public input on this agenda item?
Just a, a quick question, Mr. Baumgarten. Uh, using American Legion as an example, we have an eight-yard dumpster. Don't use the city pickup at all, but we still get billed forty-one dollars a month.
So under this, uh, we would, we have, have them reach out to DPW. They would move to the twenty-dollar and sixty cents, uh, category. The city would, the city is still paying twenty dollars and sixty cents roughly, um, for the, essentially what amounts to a ready-to-serv cost. And so, um, we would still ask individual commercial property owners to cover that cost since it's being charged to the city.
Okay. Thank you.
Charles Terrell from Berkeley. First off, to call it commercial or business is a misnomer. Uh, this applies to, to places like the Legion, VFW, Houses of Worship. They're all paying this. And go back, I've talked about this here several times before. This is a tax. Uh, the city manager got back to me finally, after several attempts, saying, it's not a tax, 'cause we say it's not a tax. Uh, we go back to the Bolt decision, Bolt versus, uh, Lansing. Uh, my reading is that there are three tests to determine whether it's a tax or not. If it's a fee, it would be proportionate to the benefit. So not a flat fee, not twenty dollars, not forty oh five for everybody. It would be proportionate, uh, and not a flat fee. It would serve a regulatory purpose. So far, we've heard no regulatory purpose other than management issues with not being able to identify which trucks, which stops Tringali should make and should not make. And the other thing is, is that the service must be voluntary. We just heard that the Legion must pay something every month. It's not voluntary. They cannot opt out. Restaurants and other high-level users, I've heard from some businesses in Berkeley who are doing thirty and forty yards a week. And they said, w- a two-yard dumpster doesn't do anything for us. We don't want it. We really don't have the space for it. We wanna opt out. They're told, no, you can't opt out. So then the service is not voluntary. This does not meet the Bolt decision, uh, criteria. It doesn't meet the tests. It is a tax. It must not be approved without a vote of we the people. This is, this, uh, I, I attended the Zoom meeting that the director of the DPW had to talk about this. Uh, there was a lot of, uh, questions that were asked. I again asked about how this does not violate Bolt. That was ignored. A lot of the other people's questions that were, uh, the questions were accepted through the comments, so everybody could see the comments on Zoom. A lot of the questions were not answered. Uh, and what it really sounded like, what the, uh, director of the DPW said was, there has been an issue with Tringali stopping at places making pickups that are not on the list and are not paying their garbage fee to have it picked up. That's a management issue between the city and Tringali. That's not an issue that the Houses of Worship, that the service organizations, that, that the businesses need to deal with. That's a management thing. And it's between the city and Tringali, the city and SACRA. It's got nothing to do with them. This is a tax, plain and simple. It's not a fee just 'cause it's on, uh, on a water bill. Please take it out.
Any other public comments? Discussion from council? Councilmember Henan?
Um, first a question. Uh, the letters that we're gonna send out, when will those go?
This week. Uh, uh, Director Flora is already preparing those, uh, as we speak. Well, not as we speak, she's home now, but, uh, she's been, throughout this week, she's been working on them.
Okay. And then, um, I have taken the allegation seriously as this attacks and looked into it deeply. And the Bolt decision itself is much more nuanced than just three bullet points. And in fact, there are clear and binding case decisions that involuntary fees can still pass Bolt. So while, I'll give an example. Um, my next-door neighbor puts out trash this much each week. You know, I put out a large garbage bag. We pay the same amount. Um, so what we're asking the commercial businesses to do here is no different than what, um, our residential, um, customers are doing as well. And it's the same fee structure from SACRA for the residential. Overall, the price is different, but the, the way it's structured is the same. It's based on the number of stops, not how many people actually put out trash. So while I, I'm sympathetic to, you know, some people that don't need the service, I looked for, is there any other way we can do this? And with the structures we're under with SACRA, I found no other way. And, and I think offering this reduced fee is the, um, best of not-great options that we have to offer.
Thank you.
That's me. Thank you. Uh, kinda to build on my colleague's, uh, point there, I wanna, uh, thank the city manager. Uh, this came up at our, uh, Downtown Development Authority, DDA, meeting, uh, last week. And, uh, and likewise, the, um, the reduced fee option, uh, was well-received by the community. That by and large, they did understand, uh, that, uh, you know, how the system works and, and those things. And they were appreciative of the work that the city's done to rectify, uh, what they had the first, uh, little, you know, stretch here in twenty-three. Uh, and so I, I wanted to express appreciation to, to you and the time you, you shared with them, talking about the current state and, and what comes before us tonight to help alleviate, uh, or at least minimize some of the issues that they're dealing with. So thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Valani?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. So just, uh, a couple of questions here. What is the process that our, uh, non-residential properties will go through to indicate what level of commitment for trash pickups?
Uh, responding to the letter that is, uh, gonna be in the inbox soon, uh, reaching out to DPW and then verify, verifying with them what the appropriate level of service is for, for their property.
So what kind of, um, because I echo Councilmember Baker's statements, you know, even just shopping about, heard a lot of frustration from our, um, from some of our small business owners about this. So I'm happy that we have this option out there. But wanna balance that with, um, as much as I love our small business owners, I love our DPW too.
Mm-hmm.
And how much manual work will this create for DPW from like a billing, a validation standpoint? Like, how will we track that to ensure that we have, uh, good fiscal management of this without burdening them?
So there will be quite a bit of initial work on this, for sure, to make sure that all of our property owners are in the right tier for, for what they manage. But after that, we'll be in a sort of a maintenance mode, so it will be better in subsequent years. And then, working with Mean Development to ask this question earlier in the application process for new businesses will be helpful as well. And that, we're in the process of working out that right now, so that we have a more complete application process, a more complete information intake process for our new businesses. But I cannot, it's going to be a high amount of work for the initial portions of it, but ultimately, we feel like it's worth it to make sure that our businesses are in the appropriate tier, and receiving the kind of pickup that they need for whatever their needs happen to be.
Okay, thank you.
How often do we engage with Tringali?
It's on, it's almost daily basis. Their operations manager and our DPW director are the main interfaces for one another. Their operations manager is, sort of works as the client relations person for the company, and so we call them, we're in conversation, almost constant conversation with them, especially on Tuesdays and Fridays when we have trucks in the city.
Mr. Terrell, the city manager did respond to your email. I've responded to your email after consulting with Attorney Stern, who has a law degree and over thirty years' experience in municipal law, and this is not, this is not, I am, okay, for, Mr. Terrell, sit down. I am responding to statements that you made that are not accurate. This is not a back-and-forth, I want to make sure that everyone at home has the accurate information. I don't want any misunderstanding or misinterpretation. Attorney Stern clarified that this is not a tax. He is a municipal attorney with over thirty years' experience in municipal law. I believe Attorney Crist could also attest to the fact that this is not a tax. If you believe that the city is doing something wrong, my suggestion would be to take this to the Attorney General, to a higher court, a higher power. We believe that we are well within our rights in this fee, it goes on the water bill, it's trash pickup, we want to keep the city clean. Thank you. Ms. Mitchell, please call the roll on R. 2723.
Valani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Black?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes. Resolution R. 2723 has passed. Ms. Mitchell, please read item number seven on tonight's agenda.
Motion Number M. 8423, matter of approving updates to the City of Berkeley's fee schedule effective January first, 2024.
Is there a motion to approve M. 8423?
So moved.
Motion made by Mayor Protem Gavin.
Support.
Support from Councilmember Henan. Mr. Baumgartner.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There are two updates included in the proposal here. The first is our community special events, as we discussed throughout the budgeting process, and then the first half of this year, the city does have a need to try to recoup some of the costs that it has into community special events. We quite often have public works personnel that are made available throughout the day to these events, in support of or in preparation of these events coming to City of Berkeley. We always have public safety officers that are assigned to these events because of the increase in individuals that are coming to visit our city, and to make sure that they have a safe experience. There are costs in advance of the, the events that end up closing up roads, whether it be Coolidge, whether it be Twelve Mile, or even one of our side streets, or one thing that, or parking lots in here as well, or even side streets, which we feel like would be under the same category. There are trash disposal services that come forth. There are some times where DPW individuals have to be called in, and contractually, they have a three-hour minimum for those call-ins. And then, sometimes, we also would like to work with those individuals to have a booth to, as a way to, reaching people in a, in a way that's different from emails or letters. So we compiled all those potential costs and have put them forth before council this morning, or this evening, and you'll see those costs per, either per hour or per event. We were close with our departments to, to come up with those, to make sure that we were adequately covering the cost as best as we could, you know, kind of gauging these things from an upfront standpoint. On this, I want to note the last section that would be added to the community special event portions of it, does say that the city manager, myself, would be able to waive a portion or all of those fees, given the nature of the event, or the potential for a community benefit. That would be, well, I'm not sure how that would come up yet, but we do know that there are plenty of opportunities where, say it's, I would say Berkeley Days in particular, working with the Chamber, those events are created in order to benefit our downtown in a way that is unique to the mission of those organizations. And in those situations, I would like to work with them in order to see if a partial waiver or a full waiver would be required. It's the same model that we would use for the waiving of the fee that we already have in that document already. Right now, the, the best that we could do to support those groups would be the waiving the three-hundred-dollar fee. This would allow us to waive any, potentially summer all of the additional fees, if we feel like the city has a vested interest in seeing this happen, or if their contributions to the community are deemed to be non-monetary in some way. Initially, the phrasing here is vague, this is the first year we'd be doing this. I do foresee that as we have a year under our belt of implementing these fees, that we'll be able to put some more objective qualifiers onto that phrasing, and then we'll refine the process over time. But this is the initial attempt at making sure that we can support those communities that support our community. The second portion of this is in response to the updates to the Retail Dogs and Cats ordinance. Council implemented a licensing provision for those, those companies. And so with that would be a application fee for that license. This one is much more simple and straightforward. We looked at the potential costs of providing oversight, and found that a fee of two-hundred-and-fifty dollars on an annual basis would be appropriate.
Thank you. I know this was a heavy lift. I appreciate all the input from directors, and really trying to fine-tune this, and your work on this as well. So, thank you. Any public comment?
Jack Blanchard, Emergency Management. As, excuse me, as I deal with all of these organizations, I get a lot of questions. So I, I don't have a problem with the fees, I just need some clarification on this. The, there's a major street closure, but there is no cost for, say, closing Robina or closing Dorthea, which are used quite extensively for different things. Are those non-charged events now?
So, Councilmember Henan had asked this question previously as well. So we are working with our Department of Public Works. As a standalone closure, it would be akin to the cost of a parking lot, it's, it's similar in timing. But as an adjunct to a larger street closure, it would be covered under the street closure amount.
Okay.
I feel would be the, the best way to handle that.
That makes sense. Closure of a parking lot, are you, for instance, Berkeley Days, there's two parking lots over there, they close. These are not included in that, or are?
Those were, that phrasing was meant to include those, those kind of events. Or also, if somebody were to stage something in a commercial parking lot on Twelve Mile or Coolidge, that would cover that as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Discussion from council?
I, I just had a few questions regarding the fees. So some of them, like the public safety officer, if they needed more security than that, or more safety than that, do these fees double then for those events? Same with like, the major street closure, it says Twelve or Coolidge, what if the event wanted to close both? Would that bump it up to ten thousand?
We, so we wouldn't, the second one first, we wouldn't allow both to be closed, the traffic patterns don't support being able to do so. So we would deny having both of them closed at the same time, both Twelve Mile and Coolidge at the same time.
The Holiday Lights Parade closed both?
It's, that's a unique experience, very unique one, for sure, and it's not a full closure, it's just kind of to allow for, saying it kind of bend around, but that one is unique, and it's definitely kind of a one-off, but it would, this would be like an outside entity coming in and say, like, say the street fair, the Art Bash and the Street Art Fest won't happen at the same time, that would be something that we wouldn't allow for. And the second one, so these would be, all of our events, there are two officers that are assigned to that in addition to the existing patrols. And so should they need to escalate, if something were to happen, we would be able to call in those road patrols, or mutual aid, as we've had to do in the last year. Perfect, thank you.
Is that a, the public safety officer portion of it, is that in our charter that we have to use our own police for our events? Or could we, because I've seen this done in the metro area, could we use volunteers, people that have their firearms licensed, they are off-duty cops, or military, or, or people of other backgrounds that are willing to sign a waiver with the city and volunteer their time to operate as a, as a security force?
Yeah, certainly other communities do it. We don't have an auxiliary division right now that we would use to, to staff those. We've had them in years past, but, so they've got rid of them through attrition, just felt like they, it wasn't providing the support for the community that it was intended for. But it's not in the charter, no.
No, but I mean, but at a hundred and twelve dollars an hour, I would say that it might be something to revisit, especially if we have the people that have the background and the capability, and are willing to volunteer. And I don't know what that will look like in terms of waivers, you know, if that'd be through the city attorney, but I think it's, I think we have a lot of people that will be willing to do something like that if presented, and at a hundred and twelve dollars an hour, I think it's something we should look at. Or I would, I would, I would be willing to look at.
Okay. Yeah, we have not looked at that, though.
True.
Councilmember Henan?
Yeah. One change I was going to recommend is just changing that letter that says, "Closure of a parking lot, closure of a parking lot or side road." Just so, you know, it's clear on the schedule, and, you know, we avoid these questions. With the retail sale of dog and cats license, just wanted to know when we're going to start that licensing period, and, you know, when it'll be due, and how we'll be intaking those information once that starts.
Sure. We're planning on having the application materials in the applicant's hands by the first of the year, and we give them thirty days, so hopefully by the first of February, they've fully committed compliance with the application requirements.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Baker?
Oh, thank you. Yeah, I was thinking about the, the waiver option that you have for partial or full, and you mentioned that it's a little loose at the moment, we'll tighten it up and all that. So the way I like to think of it is like, we're in a baseline mode here, as we go through a full cycle of the different kinds of events and things, I think we could begin to detect the patterns where it makes more sense to do a partial or a full waiver, and where it doesn't really lend itself to be waivingable, waivable. And then, you know, to kind of, to your point about formalizing it even, even more than it is today, I can see that happening. And so I'd ask that, that you and administration help track these, you know, based on the event, and then, you know, what was the decision, partial, full, or deny, you know, that kind of a thing, so that when we revisit this in the future, we can look at the data to see, you know, if, what kind of patterns emerge, and what more structure we can provide to this going forward. So, looking forward to it.
Will do.
Thanks.
Okay, Ms. Mitchell, will you please call the roll on M. 8423?
Baker?
Yes.
Black?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Valani?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes. M. 8423 has passed. We've now reached our communications portion of the evening. Ms. Mitchell, who goes first?
Councilmember Black.
Madam Mayor, council, so I am happy to announce that Ms. Flora is finalizing the new committee engagement and technology committee, so we're, we're excited about that. So hopefully here in the first of the year, we'll have more to report. Other than that, I just want to encourage everyone to remember that during this holiday season, a lot of people have friends that will not be spending their Christmas at home, they will be serving overseas, so just please keep service members that are deployed in your thoughts during the holiday season. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Henan?
Yeah, with the tree board, tree update, planting for this season's trees west of Coolidge has begun. It's maybe finished by now. And then, the tree board will next be meeting on January twenty-second. The zoning board of appeals will meet on January ninth. The auto repair place that's on Eleven Mile between Coolidge and Woodward wants to add a gas station. I think they kind of already added it without permission. And, but gas stations aren't owned, zoned for the area, so they're coming to the ZBA for a use variance. Then, wanted to just remind mostly the people at home about the zoning ordinance rewrite that we're doing. We have four important community meetings coming up next month, and we want to share with the public some of the changes that are reconsidered, and we definitely want to get feedback. So that first workshop is on Monday, January eighth, and it's going to be on the proposed changes to our zoning districts. It's where things can be built and where they can't, and, you know, don't worry, no one is proposing apartments in the middle of all of our residential areas. So the workshop is January eighth. Then there's three others on January seventeenth, twenty-fourth, and thirty-first, those are on Wednesdays, and the topics are duplexes and multifamily, parking, and the development approval process. And all of those meetings are from six to eight PM at the Berkeley High School Collaborative Center, and people can stop by anytime during those two hours. And presentations, the first one on January eighth doesn't have a presentation, the following ones that are on Wednesdays do have presentations starting at six fifteen. And if you want to get more information, you can go to berkeleymish.org/zoning, and that's berkeleymish.org/zoning. And then just finally, I wish to, you know, want to wish everyone a happy holidays and a happy new year. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Baker?
Thank you. Hooray for our last meeting of twenty-three, and here's to a great year in twenty-four. The historical committee has the month off, and they want to thank everyone involved in the Holiday Lights Parade for making that a fantastic success, and especially to those visitors and, and folks who wanted to get out of the cold a little bit, and come into the museum, and enjoy all the cool things that the, the museum has to offer. They even dug up some old video of, of some of the twenty-something years ago of historical people being interviewed and stuff, and it was really fun to watch, so that was quite a hoot. The Downtown Development Authority, DDA, met last week, and they expressed their gratitude and thanks, and I'd like to offer mine, for all the local businesses, sponsors, shoppers, and guests of the terrific merry month that we had throughout the downtown, including the experiments and trials with the elf-on-the-store-shelf idea, which I think is, is positioned for, for lots of hijinks and fun adventures in, in seasons to come. The shopping nights, the trolleys, and more. And they certainly are interested in feedback on, on how this season's events were received, and looking forward to additional ideas to build upon the successes that we've had the last several years. So that is fantastic. And finally, it was Sharon Salzberg who once said, "Holidays can be a time of both joy and sorrow. Embrace the joy and make peace with the sorrow." Now, the National Alliance on Mental Illness did a survey and said that sixty-four percent of surveyed adults say they are affected by the holiday blues, and twenty-four percent of them said they were affected quite a lot by the holiday blues. And, and that's a real thing, right? You know, lots of folks are happy, but lots of folks have a lot of things going on, and memories that make the season particularly tough. So the, there's a journal called The Minds Journal, and they offer some tips to help if you or someone you love falls, or finds himself in the, the depths of the holiday blues. Simple things like, just learn to say no to stuff, you don't have to commit to everything. Spend time with the people you enjoy. Hi, folks. Do everything in moderation. Maintain a healthy routine. Don't overspend. Don't isolate yourself. Avoid conflict and drama. Be practical. And identify your triggers, those things that especially make you sad, or, or, in a, in a bad place. Be aware of that and, and seek to, to avoid those. And given all that, you guys heard, you know, my, my little spiel about how I wrap these things up these days, please be extra sensitive to those around you, and be sure to hug somebody that you love, because they probably need it, and I sure, I'm sure it would feel good for you too. So please take care of yourselves, have a safe and happy holiday season. Thank you.
Thank you. Protem?
Thank you, Your Honor. So this Parks and Rec report is just filled with a lot of thank-yous tonight. So a big thank you to the Friends of Berkeley Parks and Rec for all the support for the department during the holiday events, and certainly all year long as well. Anyone interested in looking to become a member of the Friends group in 2024, you can check out their Facebook page. Excuse me. Excuse me. Also, a huge shout out and thanks to all the staff of Berkeley Parks and Rec for all the programming, events, extra time and care that they really put into during the year to provide kind of a fun and healthy outlets for the community. They work tirelessly to enhance our community and our ability to come together as one. And their dedication and commitment is certainly admirable, so. And then for Parks and Rec, lastly, I just want to take a moment to thank Parks and Rec Director Teresa McCarleton for all her years of service to Berkeley. Many of you know that Teresa will be leaving the city and starting an incredible new opportunity. And while we are certainly very happy for her, she will be incredibly missed. Teresa is a fundamentally kind and thoughtful person who's really poured her heart into Parks and Rec opportunities on behalf of all Berkeley residents. She's the consummate professional and a fierce advocate for bringing people together. So Teresa certainly deserves nothing less than our deep gratitude and heartfelt appreciation for all the joy that she's helped to bring to Berkeley residents. So thank you, Teresa. I know, I'm sure you're watching. Yeah. The next meeting for Parks and Rec Advisory Board is February 8th at 7:00 PM at the Community Center. And then the next meeting for the Library Board is Wednesday, January 17th at 7:00 PM. And then lastly, I just hope everyone has a wonderful holiday season filled with laughs and family and friends. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Valani?
Thank you. So from the Berkeley Area Chamber, it's hard to believe, but the January Chamber chat is coming up Friday, January 19th at Little Lou's Hot Chicken on Coolidge Highway in Berkeley at 8:30 in the morning. Registration is not required, but all are welcome. And if anybody has any last minute gift shopping to do, the gift that keeps on giving is the Burke Perk Card. It's so small, it can fit right in a, in a gift card, in a stocking, wherever you need to hide that extra gift for someone special. They're only $35 and available at participating retailers across the city.
That's all I have. Councilmember Patterson?
First, I want to thank Councilmember Henan for reading all of the dates of the zoning rewrite. I don't have to reread those, so rewind a couple minutes and you'll hear when those are. Those were on my list. So the Planning Commission meeting for tomorrow has been canceled, so they won't have one in December. And the Beautification Committee still has some luminaries for sale at the library. Those are to be set out the 21st. So that's coming up this week. And happy holidays to everyone.
Thank you. Mr. Baumgarten?
First and foremost, congratulations to Mayor Dean, who was appointed by unanimous vote earlier this month to serve as a trustee of the Michigan Municipal League's Workers' Compensation Fund Board. I know it's going to be busy, you already got the schedule for coming up for this year, but you truly have a public servant's heart. And I know that you will serve ours and many other communities across the state very well in making good decisions on that board. So congratulations to you, Mayor.
Thank you.
And as mentioned, this is our last meeting of 2023, so we'll have two full fireworks seasons between now and our next meeting. And so I just want to advocate that everyone remain as safe as possible when, when firing off those fireworks and, and be mindful of your neighbors, yourself, and everyone around you when you do so. You know, these things are dangerous, as beautiful as they are, they can have a, certainly a negative impact on your safety, and then the peace of mind of your neighbors too. So please try to keep everyone in mind this season and embody our motto of we care when celebrating in this manner. So other than that, thank you to all my staff for another fantastic year in the books. Certainly ones with ups and downs, but I had the pleasure of rewatching the mayor's speech that's running on WBRK for the state of the cities. And it is so refreshing to hear everything that went into this year. You can come away with, once, when you're in the trenches, you can come away with a feeling like, man, what do we really do? But to hear it laid out in that way, it makes me proud of my staff, proud of the city, proud of this organization. It is a fantastic way to, to end the year, anybody who hasn't seen it yet. I fully, fully advocate that you go to the WBRK YouTube channel or pop on your cable station and just take it in. I mean, it's, it really is a list of triumphs in this community. So thank you, Mayor, and thank you Caitlin, who I know helped put this together too. But thank you to the staff that gave us the things to report to the community and these victories. So it is a pleasure to lead this, this group of public servants.
Thank you. Attorney Christ, do you have anything that we need to know?
I have nothing this evening.
Okay. Thank you. Well, Mr. Baumgarten, thank you for mentioning my appointment as a trustee to the MML Workman's Compensation Board. I am honored to have been chosen to serve in this capacity, and I'm looking forward to lots of learning and bringing back all of that learning to the City of Berkeley. And finally, in this season of light, I'd like to wish everyone happy holidays, whatever you celebrate, and may you embrace the new year with a grateful heart. And with that, I'm asking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Support.
All right. We got Patterson and Valani. Ms. Mitchell, will you please call the roll?
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Valani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Black?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes. The Monday, December 18th, 2023 meeting of the Berkeley City Council is adjourned.